Good evening, everyone. I'd like to, at this time, go ahead and call this Board of Education meeting to order, December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. First item on our agenda is, I think we have Mr. Marty Paramore, Clerk of Court, come forward. I think he's got some swearing in and newly elected board members he needs to get done. Come forward, sir.
Thank you. Those folks that are, if you know who you are, step forward, please.
Do we bring our own Bible with us?
I've got, if anybody needs the Bible, I have one.
You got one?
We may have to share, and that's a good thing.
I didn't know if we could afford one.
Butts tight.
Does he glance at all around? Raise your left hand on the top, or raise your right hand.
It's kind of hard when you ain't got two hands.
Each of you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you will be faithful in their true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of state and state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God. And the second part, do each of you swear that you will thoroughly execute the duties of your officer and member of the Bover County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God. Well, thank you for your service. Thank you for calling. It's an honor to be here.
Next item on our agenda is the Board Officer Elections, and before we do that, I would just like to say a couple of things. That's okay. I would just like to thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to serve as Chair this year. Even though this year has not been anything but normal, first off, the resignation of Superintendent Don Phillips, then the sudden death of our friend and fellow Board Member Barbara Boyd-Williams, this Board had the task to interview prospective applicants to fill that Board seat, in which we did by selecting Mr. T.W. Allen. Thank you for filling that vacancy. While all that was going on, we were receiving forty-seven applications from eleven different states, from very outstanding educators that wanted the opportunity to lead this system. We narrowed that forty-seven down to nine to be interviewed. This was a very time-consuming task, but we met the challenge, and we did an outstanding job. I think this Board did an outstanding job representing the citizens of this county. Lord have mercy. Sorry about that. I didn't do that. Excuse me. Okay. It was a very time-consuming task, but this Board met the challenge in picking and representing the citizens of this county, and we finally selected a outstanding educator to be our next Superintendent, Mr. Matthew Cheeseman, who will be on Board in this county starting on January second, and we want to wish him very, very well in his new job. At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Doane to conduct the elections of Board Officers. Sorry about that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
As you know, annually, we elect a chairperson and vice chair, and I have the pleasure of operating the election for Chair. First thing I would do is ask for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Education.
I nominate Carolyn Walker.
I nominate Butch Oliver.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Super, I move that we close the nomination on the set to names.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Booth and Ms. Pete, all in favor? Close nominations?
Aha.
Okay. So our candidates are Ms. Walker and Mr. Oliver. By show of hands, all those in favor of Ms. Walker. By show of hands, all those in favor of Mr. Oliver. If my math is correct, Ms. Walker has been elected Chair.
Congrats, ladies.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I have big shoes to fill, but we will continue to vote as individual Board Members, so we all have the same vote and the same amount of power to move Bover County schools forward, and that's what we hope to do. I now want to open the elections up for Vice Chair.
I nominate Michael Billbrook.
Madam Chair, I nominate Terry Draper.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Can I entertain a motion to close the nomination?
Same thing.
All those in favor?
Aha.
All right. All those in favor of Michael Billbrook, raise your right hand. All those in favor of Mr. Draper, raise your right hand. My math is like Mr. Doane's five-four, so, Michael, welcome to be in our Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you like to sing?
I would love for you to stay right where you are. You're representing both of us.
You want this scene? I mean, you're welcome.
No, I'm fine. I can have a mood of computer.
The temperature's just a little bit warmer here.
Ms. Booth is always cold, so we're gonna let her stay right there for the rest of this meeting, and thank you both for a wonderful job. And as Mac said, he led us through some troubled waters this year, and we are very, very grateful for that, and hopefully he will continue to help us move through waters that are still moving and still churning. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, by Terry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aha.
Okay. Motion carried. Our next, yes, please, yes, yes.
I just, I just wanted to mention something at the beginning of the meeting, and I wanted, on behalf of the Board, offer our condolences to the William Warren family. I think everyone here, and probably watching, a lot of them know, Mr. Warren was a Board Member here for about eight years, twelve years, eight years, I believe. His son, Tracy, you know, they're very involved in his, in the schools, and his wife, Carol. And just, I said, I think Mac already mentioned, we lost one current Board Member this past year, now we've lost another one in the last couple of days, so just let them know we're thinking about them, praying for them, and they'll get through this. But Mr. William was a very, very likable guy. If you ever talked to him, you just had a wonderful time talking to him. Quite the guy, wasn't he, Mac?
Yes, sir.
Quite the man. And he served the county well in his role, so wanna let them know that we're thinking about them. Thank you.
Their family has been a downtown fixture in Washington for years, so our prayers are with them. We're gonna move on to our first action item, which is the Academic Progress Presentation. And Mr. Doane, there is an order. Is this correct?
There is, so we're going to immediately change that order.
Thank you for confusing me.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna let you tell us what's going on.
All right. We, actually, we're gonna, Ms. Gibbs has a band concert tonight, so her colleagues have graciously allowed her to skip to the front of the line and go first. She's also gonna set the bar, so.
That's right. That's right.
If you, you have in your board docs and then also on the screen behind us, you'll see the presentations, and I'll let Ms. Gibbs start from there. While she's getting set up, what you have tonight are the academic presentations from each school, excuse me, almost every school in Bover County. We'll have three remaining next week for that meeting. At that time, I will ask for a motion to approve all the school improvement plans. I just wanted to wait till everybody got a chance to present before we did that. So if you don't have the school improvement plans yet, you will have them by Tuesday, and then after those three presentations, that'll finish up all the academic progress presentations, and we can vote on school improvement plans for the year.
So we're not gonna need to vote on this tonight.
No, no, there's no vote.
If it's an action item, we're not really gonna.
Yes, that's right. Really should've been no action, my bad.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Public website where I can see it.
I didn't have it linked up to my phone, because I don't know what the password is.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Well, there's your dog.
Yeah, she probably had shots in there.
I have no shots.
The difficulty.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, rules of the world.
I'll tell you, rules of the world.
It will momentarily be on the screen behind you.
They had to do it old-school.
We have it on our screens, Ms. Gibbs, so it's not to hold you up. Mark, do you mind if we let her move ahead?
And I always bring a horcran, so.
There you go.
All right, we're good.
Again, we're gonna start, the first presentation slide is our two thousand seventeen, eighteen year review, and our overall school performance grade was a C. Our reading performance grade was also a C, and our math grade was a C. Our overall school growth index this year was a negative one point zero-two. Anything less than a two means that you met growth, so we did meet growth this year. Now, with our reading growth index, it was a negative two point four-seven, so we didn't meet growth in reading, but we did exceed growth in math with an index of three point three-seven. If you look at the next slide, what I would like to do is talk about the three-year comparison. And the reason why I want to do this is because I wanted to look at when I first started at Chaco in the Middle School. So if you look at our first year, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, our growth index was a negative seven point nine-four, and we did not meet growth. Not only did we not meet growth, our overall school performance grade was a D. Our reading grade was a D, our math grade was a D. So at that time, we were identified as a low-performance school. So at that point, we had to have some very, very serious conversations with our staff. We had to make some serious changes. We did a lot of things to motivate our staff, to improve our morale, motivate our students. So if you look at that next year, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we still did not meet growth, but we went from a negative seven point nine-four to a negative two point one-six. So we showed some improvement. Still didn't meet growth, but we're getting there. Our overall school performance grade went up to a C, our reading grade went up to a C, and our math grade went up to a C. And at that time, we were kind of removed from the low-performance school list, was kind of watched. So we had some things that were working, that was progressive, but we didn't meet growth. But if you see in the seventeen, eighteen school year, what we did, and I talked about that on the first slide, we did meet growth. So I want to show that since I've been at Chaco in the Middle School, we have made a lot of progress. We still have progress to make, but we are showing improvement, so that's a good thing. When we look at our academic achievements that we have, again, there's a three-year positive trend over our school improvement progress. We also want to look at the proficiency since last school year that has increased in our areas of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade reading, the proficiency increased, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math, as well as eighth grade science. We had a hundred percent proficiency in our math, one in, of course, tests. And when we look at our testing areas according to Bover County Schools, we were tested in eleven categories, and we were above the Bover County School proficiency average in eleven out of eleven categories. We were the highest in the county for our sixth grade reading proficiency at seventy-six point five, and also for our eighth grade math proficiency at sixty-four point six. Also, some other academic achievements that we did accomplish, when we look at how we compare it to the state average, six out of eleven tested categories, we were above the state average. It was fifth grade science, sixth and seventh grade reading, as well as sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math. Some of our other victories that we want to note is that we have improved our school culture and climate. For some reason, I can remember this number, when I first started at Chaco in the Middle School, we have fourteen new staff members, that include administration. So we had some morale issues, so I feel like we have definitely, definitely done a good job improving our school culture and climate. I feel like we all have a shared vision. We're all working for one common goal, which is improved student progress, so I feel like we're rowing the same way in the same boat. We provided frequent motivation for our students for academic and behavioral progress and achievements. We still didn't have some fun at school. The kids didn't have fun. I know one year, the first year, if we talked with the students, if they made progress, we had teachers that would do, graciously take a pie in the face. I actually took it, too. You know, I told the kids, the second year, we, I said, if we do well make progress, they would be able to take me to the wall, and we were taken to the wall. This year, we haven't decided what we're gonna do, but the kids actually came up, and it really motivated the students, so that was a good thing. We had high-quality professional development for our teachers because we had Title I funds, so that actually helped us out a lot, as well as being able to have support materials based on Title I funds for math reading and social studies. Areas of concern, our biggest area of concern is still the reading, because we did not reach growth in reading, so that is still a concern. When we break that down, we still have concerns for student growth in fifth and eighth grade reading, as well as student growth in fifth and eighth grade science. We're also concerned about proficiency in certain subgroups, especially students with disabilities. Our student attendance is also a concern. We do have a plan in place where if the students are absent so many days, the first contact's by teacher, the second contact's by the school counselor, the third contact, I will have a meeting with the parent, the student, to try to see if we can improve those attendance. So we do have a plan in place to hopefully improve attendance. Another concern is retaining high-quality teachers in core subject areas, and I think that's a concern in every school. For our school, it seems to be English, language, arts teachers and exceptional teachers. Right now, we just hired a new English, language, art teacher, so we've had a sub in there since November, and right now, we're still looking for exceptional teachers, so that is a concern. And also, continued support for our beginning, and that'll enter teachers to help them stay in the education profession. Where do we go from here? That is our plan. We want to continue to use our Title I funds to employ a literacy coach. This year, we did hire a literacy coach to work on interventions to help students who are struggling with reading, so that was a big part of our money. To strengthen mentoring program in our school with the support of positive behavior intervention and support. Every staff member, including any staff, constantly is working with a student that we feel like is at risk, whether it's academically or behaviorally. To continue our partnership with the Cornerstone After-School Program, we have about forty students that stay after school that works on remediation, homework, STEM, so we're still partnering with the After-School Program. To schedule teachers in areas where they have strengths based on content, so we've actually changed some schedules with teachers about what they're teaching, based on their data and test scores. We do have a flex period at end of the day, a structural day, where we work on remediation enrichment, about forty-two minutes. Usually, the first nine weeks, we do a one-school, one-book that works on character traits. The second and third nine weeks, we use the data, maybe NC check-in, I read, to offer tutoring for reading or math, and then the last nine weeks is total integrated shutdown, so we're remediated for reading, for math, and for science. And also, using the data to guide, scale those decisions to ensure quality instruction, so we are doing all of that. And that is my presentation. Are there any questions?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Going first was a good thing.
Continue to improve.
Yep.
Thank you. I hope you're doing well. Gives me a great opportunity to brag about some things that are going on in Northside, and also look for assistance in correcting some problems that we have that have recently come to light. So we, overall, I'm a movie buff, so my slides are named The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly. The Good, our biology went up ten percent. We spent a great deal of time spent working on biology, trying to improve those results, and it paid off, and now, of course, biology's not gonna count into the growth index, so all that work kind of was pushed to the wayside a little bit. So then our English scores, our English two scores, also went up almost two percent, so we were pleased with those results as well. More good. Math went up almost nine, eight percent, went fifty-one percent, and then our growth index went up nine percent. We have not met growth in five years, but at least we're moving in the right direction. That is one area that we do have to address. One thing we've talked about a lot is not becoming complacent. We, we've kind of had a lot of success in a lot of areas, and we've been proud of the results that we've had, but I do think we've kind of developed a little sense of complacency, and we're working very hard to change that, including myself. So four-year, now for the bad, the four-year graduation rate, we dropped seven percent. We did have some IDMO kids in there that counted against us, because those students don't earn regular diplomas, and they automatically count against you once they've been in high school for four years. So that's one area that we, but we're very thankful to have those kids. They enrich our lives every day. I think those of you that attended stepping out would agree with that. Those kids do an outstanding job, and we're very pleased to have them in our school. ACT work keys took a slight dip, but seventy-eight percent, we're still pretty proud of that. ACT results, this is the area that we, we have identified as a major need. We, we're, in fifteen, sixteen, you see, we were at sixty-six point seven percent. We were one of the highest traditional high schools in the state of North Carolina, and then we slipped just a little bit to sixty-four percent, and then this past year, we slipped a lot. So we're hoping that this coming year, with, with the junior class that we have, we're expecting much better results with the group that we have now. Like I mentioned to you before, we, we haven't met growth in five years, but we did have a nine percent increase from the previous year, so we were pleased with that. Some other concerning trends, I got stuck up here last year, so I'm not gonna beat this dead horse, but you see, our student enrollment is going down, and those two schools are pulling from our attendance area. We had, between the two eighth-grade classes at Northeast and Bath, there were forty students that took Math One in eighth grade last year. Out of those forty students, nineteen of them chose to go to either the Early College or NURSA. So we're losing some of our better students to those two schools, and that is a trend that I have got to figure out how to fix. I don't know if it's a community issue, a hearsay issue, but that's something that we are working very hard to fix, and we've hopefully come up with a couple ideas that will help with that issue. So to address our ACT need, we have developed an advisor-advisee period, well, not developed, but maybe revamped. We are spending a lot, a lot of time on ACT, time management skills, exposing these kids to exactly what the ACT and the pre-ACT are all about. What, what tests are they really taking? What strategies can they use to improve those results? Because a lot of these kids are looking to go to college, and these tests have a big impact on what college they're gonna be accepted to, so we spend a lot of time on time management, because one of the biggest things about ACT is answer every question. Also, how many, how much time do you have for each section? So those are some things that we've worked on, and we're gonna continue to work on. Career Day, we're, this is the thirtieth, this will be the thirtieth graduating class of Northside High School. For those of you Bover County lifers, that's kind of hard to believe that it's been there for thirty years, but this will be the thirtieth graduating class. So we said, what's some things that we can kind of do differently that we have never done before? As far as I know, Northside's never had a Career Day, and definitely hasn't had a Career Day where they're bringing in Northside graduates. So everyone, well, we're hoping, everyone that we can bring in to meet the needs of the students, that, we did a survey of all the students to see what careers they were interested in, first, second, and third choice, and now we're going to try to find Northside graduates that walk those halls, that are doing those jobs, and come and talk to those kids about what kind of requirements are needed, what do they need to be doing, what can they do differently than they're doing now? All of those kind of conversations, we're hoping we're gonna take place, and that's gonna be February the fifteenth. So if you're welcome to attend at eight-thirty. We're also gonna have an ACT boot camp. We're gonna hire substitutes for our core teachers, math, science, and English, and we're gonna reschedule our juniors for two days, one, the first, two weeks prior to the ACT, and we're gonna send them to a math class, an English class, and a science class to focus on some last-minute strategies, both of those days. And they're gonna spend time with those teachers and work on some last-minute strategies to try to improve those ACT results. Also, we do require an ACT Question of the Day in every class, and we've made some personnel changes in some of these classes. So probably the one that I'm most excited about, and I've talked to Mr. Clint Scales and I've talked to Mr. Peck about this, we're emailed anyway, and we're going to bring the eighth graders over for an entire day. We're gonna match them, whether you're a sophomore or a junior, and they're gonna spend the entire day at Northside, they're gonna follow that kid's schedule, they're gonna do it early enough, so if they're interested in college classes while they're still in high school, we're gonna assign them to a high school kid that is taking college classes on campus. And they're gonna follow that kid's schedule all day, they're gonna eat lunch in the cafeteria, they're gonna go to break with those kids, and then when, once they get there as a freshman, then that student is gonna be their buddy student. And so if they have questions about where's, where's my second-period class, how do I get to this, how do I type in my lunch number, or whatever kind of problems they have, kind of like we do with a mentor teacher. So we are very excited about this. This is an idea that I think is gonna be a great way to help bring these kids to Northside, get them interested in what we're doing, and see the great things that are going on. Just some of the things that, because you cannot measure every, now, this is coming from a math person, it's hard to believe I'm saying this, but you can't measure everything by a test. We had Battle of the Arts Saturday night, the most participation we've had since I've been there. We had, which is kind of like stunt night. We had the band concert last Thursday night, an outstanding performance by them. We had the dance recital last night, a huge group of kids participating, and the IDMO kids actively involved in those classes. And to see those kids participate in those events, not to mention beating Riverside in a packed gym the other night, that was also exciting. So there are a lot of great things going on at Northside. I do know we have some areas to work on, but I'm gonna do my best, and the faculty and staff at Northside, and the students at Northside are gonna do their best to make Bover County Schools proud of Northside High School. With that said, I think that's it.
Well, we are proud of Northside High School, but I think your idea about the eighth-grade students, you've never done that before.
Never done that.
I think that's phenomenal.
Oh, yeah. Maybe you're grabbing for the other people, dude.
That's what I'm hoping.
That's right.
Yeah. Because I think if they actually see what's going on there, it's gonna make a difference. Because they come for a tour now, but they don't get a whole lot out of that.
That's not the life of the day.
We're gonna do Northeast one day, and then we're gonna hopefully work out any kinks, and then we're gonna bring Bath in with a day in between. That's the plan, anyway.
I think that's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Let me know if I can help you out on Career Day.
That'd be great. It's great. Your name has come up several times.
Let me know.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
You won't let me do it, because I didn't grab it.
I did.
I know, I'm a year out. I'm like.
We may give you help. Somebody's taking a sticker.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. Sometimes.
Hers went one-six, maybe, seven.
You're doing that.
Yes, sir. We're back on track now.
He just jumped over.
I pulled a quick exit. Some color. I said, get me some color. Six o'clock.
Just messing up my basketball. The bear much? All right. Maybe we must.
Good evening.
Good.
I'm going to start off, we're just gonna go over some, some EOG data. This summer, I sat down, I actually had an intern, and she helped me out a whole lot. I'm making graphs, and I made, we probably made about twenty-five graphs and showing information in different ways to share with my sit team, and we're gonna go through those twenty-five here, and I'm just playing, I narrowed it down to about nine.
We knew you were playing. Yeah, we got the presentation, it says ten.
in different ways to share with my sit team, and we're gonna go through those 25 here. Um, and I'm just playing, I narrowed it down to about nine.
We knew you were playing.
Yeah, we got the presentation, it says 10.
Um, this first one right here shows, uh, my EOG reading comparison by grade level. I also did a graph, the next one you'll see is by cohort, because I think it's important to follow not just what we're doing as a grade level from year to year, but that cohort of students, do they grow from third grade to fourth grade? Um, if you look at by grade level, we're doing some good things, because all but one grade, uh, went up. Um, and the fourth grade, it, it didn't go up, but they still made growth. So, that, that's an important thing to look at. When you look at cohorts, um, so that fourth grade group right there, the first one is where they were in third grade for reading, and that's where they finished in, in fourth grade. So, so they're growing. I've got, um, the fifth grade, if you look, it, it did not grow from, from fourth grade to fifth grade. I, I think that's about statewide. I'm not 100% sure what happens in fifth grade, if the, if the test is so harder, but I'm, I'm doing some, some research and some, and some things, just to, to try to see what it is about fifth grade and why it's so hard. I also had a new teacher, um, doing fifth grade language arts that came from the high school, and, uh, she's, she's doing great things, but it was a, a big curve for her to go from high school students to, to fifth graders. And this right here, I wanted to do, um, to show where we were proficient with our standards. Okay? And we've got the three different strands. You have language, you have reading literature, and then you have informational reading. And what that graph shows us is pretty much across all grade levels, that nonfiction texts is what we were struggling on the most. Um, so, we've got some strategies in place, making sure we're getting some more nonfiction into the students' hands, um, through the library and through Wit and Wisdom, and printing those nonfiction passages that comes with it, and making sure we're doing good instruction there. Our math, this is by grade level. If you, if you look at our math, we're, we're doing good things in math, but reading, math is, is, is kind of our weak point. Our reading scores were higher than our math scores. Um, if you look at fourth, fourth grade as a grade level, again, just, it did not, uh, it did not grow. But eighth grade, I was real proud of that, because our eighth grade, if you go back several years, even before I got there, it was, it was low, and it's on a rising trend. So, we're, we're doing good things there. And this is by cohort. And again, you look at fifth grade, well, I, I don't know what it is. Uh, uh, but we're gonna figure it out. Uh, we're doing some, we're doing some good things all the way across the board. And this is our standard comparison. I got two graphs here, one's third through fifth, and then I have a sixth through eighth one, because the standards change a little bit. And again, this is just like reading, so that we can possibly look and see what standard going across the board are we, are we not meeting? Um, and then we, we really looked at these graphs as a sit team and just, uh, you know, discussed strategies and what can we do to, to hit these standards that we're, we're a little low on. And there's your, uh, sixth through eighth grade. If you look at number systems for eighth grade, that's 9.1 percent proficient, but if you go look at how much of the test that is, this amounts to like two questions. So, if a student gets one right and one wrong, they're, they're not proficient in that. So, it's really not tested in eighth grade for number systems very well. This is our EVOS growth. Um, it's a two-year comparison. Your first two bars are for all, all growth. So, the year before I got there, we did not meet growth. That's that red, red bar going all the way down, and last year, we went to a positive 1.23. So, we're moving in the right direction. Hopefully, we will, we will maintain that with all the positive things that we have going on in Bath. The other ones are, the first one is, uh, reading, I believe, and the next one is math. No, vice versa, math, and then reading. You can see we did not grow. It's red, because we did not meet growth in math the year before I got there, and now we're on a positive trend. And then in reading, we did meet growth, even though it's below the bar, but it's not below that negative 2 mark. Um, but as an educator, we're perfectionists, we don't wanna see things below the bar. This year, we were above the bar. So, I wanna finish just to talking about some strengths and some celebrations and things that we have going on. I could talk to you about programs all day long, but we all know a program is, is as good as the teacher that's teaching it. Um, so, we do have some good programs in place, and we're monitoring them, and we're, we're making changes and, and making them our own, and making sure we're meeting the needs of our students. But a big celebration is that we've met growth this year. Um, when I got there, the year before, we were a C school. This year, we've moved back to a B school. Um, one of the biggest things that I, that I have done with a lot of help, because it's, it's hard with a, with a K-8 school, was to revise the schedule and make a master schedule. When I got there, there was no master schedule. Teachers did not have common planning times. It was not consistent, and we, we sat down, and, and I came up with an idea to really, truly make it work. Um, fourth through eighth grade, they have five periods now, uh, and we implemented club classes. So, what that is, is for seventh and eighth graders, I went to the teachers and I told them, hey, let's, um, let's come up with something different. Let's make this class period so our band students don't get pulled out of core classes, and then we have something else for our other students to do. I said, get creative. I want you to have fun with it. Let's step outside of your, your box. If you like knitting and you wanna have a knitting class, let's do it. So, we came up with course descriptions and let the kids register for them, just like they do high school. We've got line dancing, science club, uh, intro to film, where they got a green screen, and they're actually making commercials, just a whole lot of different things, and , uh, the kids love it, and they're having a good time. And the teachers actually love it. It's, it's a break from what they do every day. We have a first aid class. All eighth grade students have to go through that, because they're required to do CPR. So, eighth grade does do that. We had an ambulance out there today. Um, so, they're, they're doing good things. We have scheduled remediation time now, uh, for fourth through, well, actually, third through sixth grade, first thing in the morning from 8:00 to 8:45. We get all of our AIG pullouts done during that time, so we're not, uh, necessarily taking them out of math. So, we're getting our pullouts done during that time, and we're able to work with our struggling students. We have added a new STEM class for our sixth through eighth grades as part of their electives that they go to, just like they go to PE. Uh, we've started to do student and teacher recognition, so we've, we have recognition ceremonies, uh, for ABI Honor Roll and Purge Awards each nine weeks for the student, and we do a Pirate of the Month. Two teachers get a trophy that we pass at our, uh, staff meetings. They're actually bobbleheads, they're kinda cool. Um, we have PBIS, it's going really well. It's really forming a family atmosphere. We changed it a little bit from last year to this year. We have a game room in our cafeteria that students can earn, uh, for positive behavior and good things in the classroom for the last 10 minutes of their lunch. Once they're done eating, they can go play air hockey, or foosball, or basketball. We have grade level and department meetings, uh, weekly. We have data meetings. After Christmas, we're gonna start tutoring Tuesdays, where we will use EVOS and classroom data to actually pick students and, and invite them to stay. And then one thing about Bath is the parent and community support is great, and we couldn't do a lot of the stuff without them. So, um, do we have some things that we're working on? Yes, uh, but we're gonna continue to work on them as a team. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Wish likes are going in the right direction.
We're sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, the first few slides you're gonna see, um, that's just us. The next talks about how we're made up, um, you know, pre-K through fourth. I do this every time, just to kinda show you where we are. Everything's the same, except we do not have three, um, reading teachers anymore because of cuts. We only have two, and that third one had to go into a classroom. Um, our classroom initiatives are the same. We have added iReady, which is a county initiative that we use for our core, um, for our diagnostic screener. Um, Wit and Wisdom, we use in kindergarten. First grade is doing a little bit of that this year, along with some other resources, as well as fourth grade. These are interventions, um, that we use each year. We're continuing to use our tutors in third and fourth grade. Our encore teachers, which is, um, art, music, PE, and the computer lab, we pull them when they do not have a class, and they are assigned second, third, and fourth, and they go and remediate. We also have some parents this year who have, um, become very regular in coming and tutoring in the classrooms, um, which is, is new for us. Okay, this is where we get into our data. This is our DIBELS data, so these are, these are the results of your Kinder, first, second, and third. DIBELS composite proficiency from, starting from 2012 to 2013, all the way to last year, that's your first group. Um, we're always above 80 percent there. DIBELS are your first sound fluency, being able to use those strategies when you're reading, sounding out the words, chunking the words, those things, the things that you have to know to be able to read. The other side, to the right, that's your TRC proficiency, and that is when you're required to read a book and then retell the book, and you also have to do written questions to the book. Now, when you're in kindergarten, you're on grade level when you get a D. You don't start answering written questions until you're on an F. Um, for this data, and as you can see, our, my, our K3 teachers do a really good job with this. Um, they use the Jan Richardson model for guided reading. Our reading recovery teachers are experts on it. They train, every year they do a refresher, anyone new that comes in, they train them, they go and observe them and give them pointers. We have a new kindergarten teacher this year, and they go in there at least once a week, and she's feeling at ease and actually had a really good lesson yesterday. So, they are great support for our folks. Um, but this year, you're gonna see a little something different when we do these next year, because we were giving, by the state superintendent, new books this year. We got Atlas Books, so we're not using our old books from our M-class assessments. We're using new books, and the written part is not required. So, before, when I could read, say, an ELM, but I couldn't answer the ELM questions, I went back down. Even though I could read the book, it put me back down. Um, and these proficiency scores that you're seeing up here are with the written portion. I believe these are going to go up a lot, because the written portion does not count. So, now, if I read an ELM, but I can't answer the questions, I keep going. This is gonna be interesting. However, we met with curriculum this summer, all the elementary folks, and we decided we wanted to keep the written part, because before, we weren't teaching writing like we are now, to answer those questions and be able to respond to text. So, we don't wanna take that away. So, as the principals met with, um, Mrs. Fitz, Mrs. Brantley, and Mrs. Lilly, and we just thought it would be best, we know it's not gonna hold the children back at all, we're following what is expected, but we're keeping the writing piece in and using that to guide our instruction about reading groups. Okay, the next slide is our end-of-grade proficiency gains, and the first two sections graphs are reading and math for third grade, the last two, reading and math for fourth grade, and it goes from 2012, 13 to current. Um, we are a B school. We have continued to meet growth. However, we are, and when they go to fourth grade, our growth, our growth, like you heard them say, that below a negative 2 is when you start not meeting growth. We're, we're getting close to there. Um, I didn't put your, your numbers for you, but if you look back in 2013, 14, I can just kinda tell you, that fourth grade in reading, they grew two points. So, the third graders, and that's looking at cohorts, because that's really what you need to be looking at, because each group of children are different. Um, so, the cohort there, from third grade to fourth grade, they grew two points in reading. The next year, from third grade to fourth grade, they grew six points in reading. Then, in 2015, 16, that cohort of children went down seven points in reading. The next year, they grew one point in reading, and then they went down again one point. So, it's been kinda inconsistent. If you did the math, you would see, and that's probably how I should've put that up there for you. And if you look at the math part, same thing. They started out plus 11, from the cohort of 12, 13 to the cohort of 13, 14, they grew 11 points, and then they started slipping a little bit. The major difference was, in the year 2015, 16, we had a whole, we only had two teachers that had been there, Cameron Hill and Monica Smith. Two of our teachers left and went to Greenville, because they live in Pitt County. So, we had, we hired a teacher from out of state. She stayed with us two years. She lives in Bath, now she's with Mr. Peck. I don't blame her. I would want to go, I mean, I would want to move to where I live. Um, so, we have, um, and it was a year he left too, by the way. I don't think he took her or anything like that. But, um, so, anyway, we, so now, we currently had one teach, two teachers still, with all the other ones that were new. And we got an intern half the year, so she came in, she took over a class, fresh out of second grade to fourth grade, was not her niche. So, moved her to kindergarten, I'm so happy to say kindergarten is her game. She is a teacher leader, doing a great job. Um, just, I can't speak enough for how much she's grown. You know, you gotta find your spot. So, we are currently in fourth grade, trying to build capacity with who we have, with new people, and getting the knowledge, because there is a learning curve when you come in. Um, and that, let me click down, I'm sorry. That's where I wanna take us, and we're still meeting growth, we're still a B school, but we want to keep growing and not slipping. So, we're trying to, we meet all the time. We have data meetings, we've always had data meetings, we're continuing to amp up our data meetings. Also, to help with this problem, last year, third and fourth grade started student data notebooks, and I met with every child and every teacher, and we went over the data. This year, we made that school-wide, so even Kinders have a data notebook, and it'll move up with them, and we had parents come out, and we did it from 1 to 6. See, do y'all remember back in the days when we had conference days? And we don't have those anymore, and we can't get parents, like, we have done so many things to get parents out to school. We have Title I Parent Involvement Money, so we'll feed them and do all kinds of stuff, but it's still, you're getting your same parents. We can't get the ones we need. Well, we, I think we finally found it with these student data notebooks. So, we did 10-minute, um, time slots for meetings, and the grade levels worked it out. So, we started at 1, and we were able to use our special area teachers for coverage, so when they could meet, they could do it confidentially, and they had the things that they tried, the things they work on, whether it be Lexia, their AR, um, their end-of-grade, like what they did in third, or what they did in fourth, their iReady, diagnostic, all those things. And they led the conference with their teacher there facilitating, the student led the conference, and y'all, we had just about 100% show up that day. So, I think we found our ticket there, and we are gonna continue that by doing another day in the spring, and the parents loved it. Uh, and it also helped teachers not having to stay so late with nightly things, trying to get them out there. You know, it was a one day, 1 to 6, and they came, parents all over the place. So, that's one thing we're doing. Also, we are planning, looking at the way we're planning, because we have three BTs in fourth grade. They need a lot of support. So, we have, third grade and fourth grade have done some planning together and modeled, um, and we're constantly reviewing and updating and having those conversations to see how we can support them, because it is hard and it is scary to go in and know the expectation, because as sad as it is, yes, we're judged on how we do. And you try not to harp on that, but everyone knows we're judged on how we do. We have implemented peer observations. Um, this semester, they go and we ass- This semester, they go and we assigned someone for them to observe, they fill out the sheet, and it's what did I see, what can I use in my classroom, what questions do I have? That's been great, so they did that, and next semester, they pick who they want to do. We always talk about doing these little educational rounds, but you get so caught up in life, you don't do it. So we put it on the calendar. We're also doing vertical planning with the grade below, the grade above, which also incorporates with CMS. We're planning with the fifth grade teachers, that's been great. Our reading specialists, instead, they used to just work up till third grade, but we saw a lot of growth with those kids that they worked with last year, so, and we moved them to fourth grade. They're also working with fourth grade now, which took some support from the second grade teachers, but we're having to fill in some areas. We were able, this year, our celebration was, we sent our new people that we had gotten since our RCA trip, we were able to send them the RCA. Another struggle that I don't know that we'll ever get over, y'all, is we do not have an AIG teacher. We haven't had one since last year. Our teachers, you know, they do extension activities, but it's still not the same. They have a lot on their plate. My kids that are identified AIG, or the kids in the lower grades that could go out to get some enrichment, they don't get that anymore, because we don't have anyone. And we did share that person with CMS, so Ms. Gibbs doesn't have anyone either. And we would love to have one. Brave of the Month, this is a way that our teachers, kinda like his Pirates of the Month, we nominate each other, and we read it out, we make a big deal about it at our staff meetings, and then one is chosen for Brave of the Month. If you follow us on Facebook or Instagram, you saw Coach John Lampkins was our Brave of the Month this week. We did that on Monday, I believe. And then everyone gets a little gift. Pre-K, and this goes away from testing, really, but pre-K, we have two classrooms, and they go to kindergarten. And we know that children qualify for pre-K because they need emotional and social support. But we also want them to be ready for kindergarten. So we've really, we've included our pre-K teachers in all of our data meetings, and the language that we're using, because they don't get that, because they use creative curriculum. And in recent meetings with parents, the comment came up, "Well, I didn't know kindergarten's gonna be like this." So we had two dates, we had one in November, one in December, where we had pre-K parents come, and they observed in kindergarten classrooms, and then they debriefed with the teachers so they could ask questions. And we're gonna do two more dates in the spring, so they can see how much the kinders have grown, just so they can get an idea and be ready for that change, because it is a big change from pre-K to kinder. And I believe that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions?
Make a comment, just real quick. On the AIG piece, that's a piece that comes up when I have conversations with people from the school occasionally, so don't give up on that. Matter of fact, when it's after the first year and we start having the budget discussions, be sure that's brought back up again, especially our new superintendent, because I think there's gonna be some creative ideas kicking around on how to handle some of that stuff.
Well, and we have the money for the position, there's just...
We gotta find them.
Yeah.
Right, it's been posted since we...
Yeah. We just can't find them, and that's another challenge, too.
We gotta figure it out.
Finding some good people.
Because that's a segment of students we don't need to let go.
Right.
I think one of the things that we're hearing over and over, and we heard this from our principals, the last time there was presentation, is that one of the most important factors that seems to affect data the most is teacher placement.
Yeah.
And so I applaud you principals, because that is a struggle, because you may have a teacher that's been teaching fourth grade for ten years and thinks that he or she has found their niche, but as a principal, you have to do the hard thing and go, no, you really haven't.
Or just to make some changes to what we're doing.
Right, I think something else could happen here, so I know that's gotta be tough, but are you trying to show?
I'm not trying to do anything. I just got this new phone, and my watch and the phone are not talking very well together.
But anyway, that seems to be an overwhelming struggle for you all, but I ask you to continue, because we've had some principals that, since they've made these moves, and it sounds like you've found this out too, they have seen success. You know, they have seen these teachers take off, so...
Well, and I think also just keeping that open line of communication and interns coming in, because it's just hard to find folks these days.
Oh, I agree, but we can do it.
So we're continuing to do that.
We'll find a way to do it.
Thank you.
New day coming. I mean, whatever. We just gotta, we can't give up on it.
I don't think we will, I think it's gonna be...
Can I not follow Alicia next year?
Good evening. I wanna first of all, start off by just saying how happy I am to be back. I'm really enjoying myself at Southside, and it feels like being at home again, and so I'm happy to be here. Happy to be talking about data and all of those things that most folks probably don't like to talk about. I'm gonna start out talking about some results, and I'll go through these relatively quickly. Last year gave me a pretty unique perspective, because of coming in at the tail end of the school year, there was no time to go in and start changing things or anything like that, so it really gave me an opportunity to be able to walk and observe and watch and see where I thought the strengths and the weaknesses were, and kinda formulate a game plan moving forward. But we ended up the school year last year, and I've given you the three-year trends here. Math one, we finished at fifty-one point one percent proficient, which was almost an eleven percent gain, which was wonderful, that was something we were very happy with. English two, we ended up at thirty-nine point eight, which was five and a half points down. And biology stayed about the same, twenty-six point seven, and that was a one-point drop from the previous year. I have to tell you that when I left the school system, the scores were much different than they are right now. I was used to seeing things in the eighty and ninety percentile range, so when I got these scores, I just about had a heart attack. But we're gonna keep on working on them. Our ACT score is another bright spot. We did go up twelve percentage points there, so we were at fifty-four percent. Work Keys went down, and I've found that Work Keys, I think, is a little bit of a difficult situation, because it's one of those tests that students don't get a grade for. And so oftentimes, the students say, well, if I'm not getting a grade for it, I don't really care about it, and so they don't work hard at it. And so this is going to be something that we're gonna have to try to move forward on for next year, is trying to make them understand that it's important for the school, and it's important for you down the road. You may earn a credential through this that will help you down the road. So that's something that we've gotta work on, is making them understand all of these tests are important. Cohort graduation rate fell one point seven percent, but again, here's our positive, that our growth score went up sixteen point one percent. So we made tremendous growth there, and I was thrilled with that. We're gonna continue to keep on getting better. What I wanted to show you next was, after we got all of these results, one of the things that I wanted to do with our teachers was, I wanted to talk about exactly what these results mean. I don't think that you can move forward unless you have an accurate picture of where you are and what you're doing. So I spent the summer working through every teacher that taught an EOC, that taught an NCFE, that taught a CTE class, that gave any kind of a state test. I took their data and spent the summer disaggregating that data. And what you're looking at is the analysis of one of the teachers. This is, and I've blacked out the name to keep it confidential, but that's one of our Math One teachers. And so what I gave them, and what I went over with them, was a breakdown, so that they could see exactly how every student that took the Math One exam at Southside High School finished, in terms of proficiency, and what their overall mean score was, and then exactly what it took to be proficient in that course. And then I took it and broke it down by those subgroups. We looked at it by the racial subgroups, and broke it down, and did the comparisons. And you can see there that if it's red, then that means that that particular subgroup was not where it needed to be. It was either below the group mean, or it was below course proficiency. If it was green, then that means that they were doing well with that particular subgroup. Then I took it and broke it down further by racial subgroups, as well as gender subgroups, so that they could see just exactly what students are the ones that are performing. And really, that is a reflective tool, so that I, as a teacher, can look back and see, what students am I reaching and what ones am I not reaching? And I think that that was an eye-opening experience for some of the teachers. But again, every course that was taught that had a state exam had an analysis like this that they looked at and that we went over to try to help them preparing for the next year. So with that, I also gave them a graphic, took that analysis, and tried to give it to them, also in a chart format, something that might be a little bit easier to understand. And I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, I don't wanna get too far down in the weeds with it, but this is the same information, but it's given in a graphical format, so that teachers can see where their racial subgroups were performing, if they were at or above the course proficiency, or if they were at or above what was needed in terms, excuse me, the group mean. So it's just another way of looking at the same information to try to make it a little bit more meaningful. Our celebrations, though, that we had were, that we made growth last year, which was a wonderful thing. My folks were very excited when they got that news. We moved from a D-school to a C-school, and so we celebrated that, that's a good thing. So with that, now we're trying to figure out where we're gonna go. So now that we have an accurate picture of where we are, I also spent time this summer setting out goals for every teacher. Every teacher that was teaching a state test of any kind, if you were performing, if your scores were below seventy percent, you generally had a ten percent increase that was your goal that would be expected for this upcoming year. If you were further below than that, as you can see biology was, I upped it, because I think that there's so much room to grow and so much opportunity, that I don't think that's expecting too much. But our goals for this year is biology, we want to be at forty percent at the end of the year. Math one, we want to be at sixty percent. And English two, fifty percent. Those would be thirteen, ten, and ten percent gains. Our ACT goals for this year is to move to sixty-five percent, which would be a ten percent gain again. Work Keys, I wanna get it to seventy-two percent, which would be another ten percent gain. And these may be lofty goals, but I think you have to set them high. Our cohort graduation rate, we're gonna increase that up to eighty-seven percent, which would be a five percent increase. I've already told all of my kids, and I've told the parents as well, that dropping out is not an option, because I refuse to sign the paperwork. That's just, I'm just not gonna do it. I'm not gonna do it, so they might as well come on to school. Our growth score, though, I want to see a five percent increase in that, I wanna see that up to seventy-eight percent. And our goal that we've talked about is to move from a C-school to a B-school. We want to do that, and I think that's very attainable. So, I think probably what you folks are most important, or, excuse me, most interested in, is how are we gonna get there? The first thing that we're going to do is, we're gonna increase rigor in the classroom. As I walked around and watched, it seems to me that we've become so conscientious of making sure that we're teaching and that we're reaching every student, that a lot of times, we're lowering our standards, we're not teaching at the level that we should be. And so what I said to the teachers, that I want you to pick out the highest achieving student in the class, and I want you to teach to that level, and everybody else will get on board, and they'll rise to that level, and we'll get there. Another thing that I saw was, we've become, we're a one-to-one school, every student has a Chromebook, we've become so reliant on the technology, that oftentimes, I think that we're allowing the computer to do the teaching for us. So I've said to them, I don't want to see students on the computers all the time. I want to come in the classroom, and I want to see you up teaching, and I want to see direct instruction going on. I also saw last year that we, for whatever reason, got away from homework. I think that's the wrong way to go. I expect homework. There's nothing wrong with kids doing a little bit of work every night when they get home. It reinforces the concepts that we've taught throughout the day. Teacher said, well, what are we gonna do if they didn't do it, or they don't do it? And I said, well, we're not gonna give them a zero, because that lets them off the hook. I said, you call me, I'm gonna come down, and I'm gonna get them, and I'm gonna carry them down to ISS, and they'll sit there until they get it done. Not doing your homework is not an option. I don't know of a job that you can go to and look at your boss and say, I don't feel like doing that today. So they're going to do it. Hopefully, they won't be too bullheaded about it, and they'll get it done and get on out of there quickly enough. Another big thing that I did this year, and I did this when I was at Southside in years past, was I made all of our EOCs that are standard-level EOCs, I moved those to a year-long format. So we will teach, we are teaching now in the fall to all of our standard-level kids, Intro to Biology, and then they'll take Biology in the springtime. So it gives us more time to be able to get more in-depth, and really make sure that these kids are mastering all of these concepts. Brought back the concept of professional learning communities. To me, that's one of the things that I've seen that makes more sense than anything else, capitalizing on the knowledge and ability that you have already within the building. We are also looking at data, more than I think my folks have been used to. I have required all classes to develop and administer what we call formative assessments every four and a half weeks. Every class administers a test every four and a half weeks. It should be cumulative, so that we can measure and we can see what the students are gaining and what they're not. They are required then, I give them about a week's time, they're required to put together a data analysis of how those students did, and I'm gonna show you that in just a minute. And then, those students that are not passing those formative assessments, we have interventions that we use to try to get them back on board with the tutoring and all the things that you've heard other folks talk about as well. But another thing I'm excited about with the ACT is that, we're gonna do an ACT Blitz. I think Mr. Clark kind of alluded to that. He called it Boot Camp, we're calling it the Blitz. But every day, two weeks prior to us taking the ACT, our junior class is gonna be divided into four groups, and they are going to be rotated during our flex time every day, between a math, a science, a reading, and then also a language teacher that will work with them on language skills, but also test-taking skills. So we're hoping to see gains from that. I think that by rotating them through that, and we're gonna try to provide some incentives for those that do well through that, to make it a little bit more enjoyable and kinda build some excitement with that. The next slide I've given you is a copy of the data analysis tool that my teachers are doing with their formative assessments. You can see across the top, we list off all of the questions that are on the test, and they have to give me the standard that that question is measuring. And then I've blacked out on the left side, all of the student names down the left side, and then they go through, and if the student got that question right, they put a one in there, if they got it wrong, they put a zero in there. And then you can see at the bottom, it starts to total how many students got that question correct, how many got it incorrect. And probably more importantly is the next slide. I ask them to then go ahead and take that information, and they have to break it down and give me the mean for each of their subgroups, so that I know how their various, and they know, more importantly, how their various subgroups are performing on that formative assessments, or, excuse me, that formative assessment. Then I require them to list out the names of all of the students that scored below eighty percent. I wanna know who they are, I wanna know all of the questions that were, the standards that were below eighty percent for the class. And then I require them to tell me what they are planning to do to remediate each of those students and then each of those standards for the class. This is a lot of work on the teachers, but I think that it's going to bear fruit. But those are the things that we are doing. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Rick, what's your student enrollment?
We're about four-hundred and twenty. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Some awesome data right there.
Yeah.
That was some talent.
Good evening. I'll start off by saying, I'm a math guy like Mr. Clark, and I kinda have this set up in a very quantitative way. I try to lay it out so it's easy to follow. I try to lay it out so it's easy to follow, as far as the numbers go. And I even used some Christmas colors in the second slide to kind of lighten it up a little bit. That's about as light as I get, I suppose. But as we go on, we'll talk a little bit more about some of the qualitative stuff that we're doing at Washington High School, some of the culture pieces that connects all of it. Ms. Walker said earlier about teacher placement, things like that. Sometimes subjective, use these quantitative backdrops to make your decisions, but sometimes it's a little bit subjective. You've got to kind of take a risk and see what happens when you go down that road. So I was about to say, next slide. I don't even know where I'm at. Okay. In this first slide, these are our last three years' achievement indicators. And as you'll see, you can kind of see, that first column, 15, 16, was my predecessor. That was kind of, that was our baseline. And that next year, that was my first year in place, kind of watching things, not knowing the teachers very well. I lost two science teachers in that summer when I came onboard, had to replace them with two lateral entry teachers who worked very hard for me, but sometimes when your experienced folks leave, you have a little bit of a drop, and I think that's what we experienced in that first year. In our Math One proficiency, we went up in that first year. We worked very hard with teachers, and I'll talk, I'll break it out in just a second a little bit more. But as you can see, as it goes across, we're trending upwards with our EOC proficiency, and I'm very happy with this data. In that first year, we were where we were. We analyzed it, came back to the table, redrew things as a team, and this is where we're at, and we were at plus seven, plus nine, and plus seven across our proficiencies, and I was very, very happy with that, especially biology, which I'll get to in a second. Like Mr. Charles, Mr. Clark said, the good, the bad, and the ugly, kind of the bad here is the ACT. We're kind of working that out this year, and I'll talk about that in a second, too, but that's our trend down, is the ACT proficiency and the ACT work keys. Four-year graduation rate going up just a little bit each year. We're doing probably more with it this year, policy within our own policies at a school level, looking at the CGR report, working with Ms. Lilly and things like that to try to iron out some of the kinks in that, to get that up just a little bit, as well as some other things with the students. Passing Math Three has remained constant, no issues there. When you look at our EOCs, again, I'm very happy with the way we're trending here. There were some strategic moves put in place at the school level. English two, after that first year, we lost two teachers, made the decision to place a very good English teacher that had never taught English two from my building, and another in-county transfer that came in and was very good to have onboard with us to round out that three-person team again with one experience from before. And we saw a good bit of growth with English. We did a lot of PLC work, and I must say, with my English department, really with all of them, but with the English department, they were PLCing without me even showing up. I mean, they were talking about data, where they were going, what they wanted to do. They worked very hard together to get that going. So the PLCs were run a lot by the teachers themselves. Master schedule collaboration, that's in every one of these. I think it's important, I think student placement is important. It's kind of a, you need your teachers onboard to identify what students should be in their classrooms, what students don't interact with other students very well, what students may have already passed this class and shouldn't be in there, and so on and so forth. So with the master schedule, we try to have that out at Washington before the summer. Sometimes that's a tough endeavor. We try to have it out before the summer so the teacher can review their rosters. And I send them out a form, and I say, look, let me know how your roster looks, how should we do this? And if there's any student that shouldn't be in there, let me know, justify it. It's not a dislike-like thing, it's a strategic placement. You've had this student before, you taught him last semester and they did not do well with you. Or they don't interact with Johnny well, and he's in the same class. Or they do interact with Johnny well, which is also bad for that class because they're just going to get things going. And so, you know, what kind of ideas there? So try to get the student placement well in advance of August so we can have everything in place. So that's the master schedule piece all the way down. With Math One proficiency, just like some of the other high school folks are saying, utilization of that foundations class. Now, we went back this last year, and our counselors are talking to PS Jones about those Math One kids coming up that are good students that just didn't take Math One in eighth grade, they're going to recommend them to take semester-long. So they're in a semester-long class. Everybody else will go in the year-long foundations and then Math One. One of the things that was going on before I came onboard was that folks that were in foundations that did not pass that course were still pushed on into the EOC course. So, and if you've been around for a little while, you know that Algebra One, Math One is a huge inflection point for mathematics. In order for you to succeed in Math Two, geometry strand, whatever strands you're on, you have to be successful in Math One. So if you're taking foundation students who do not do well and pushing them through to the next level, you're not only taking hits strategically with your school, you're setting them up for failure at the next level. So when the students do not pass foundations, we try to get them back into another foundations course or an advanced foundations course where they're still working those same pre-topics before they go into Math One. Again, master schedule collaboration, one thing I didn't mention earlier, trying to get all our teachers the same planning. Last year, that worked out very well with English two having same planning, Math One having same planning. Biology only had one teacher, I'll talk about that in a second. But very important pieces to keep everybody talking and moving forward. Biology proficiency. At Washington High School, when I came onboard, we had ninth and 10th graders taking biology. If they failed it, they were put right back into biology again and again and again. And so what I did was I moved biology back to 11th grade. So I want the students to have at least two science courses under their belt before they take that biology course. It also gives them a time to mature so they're actually taking that material seriously when they reach that level. I was very, by moving it back to 11th grade for this previous year, we had no honors courses. All of those folks had already taken it. We had only a few sections of biology. So they were all standard courses. The teacher who, the one teacher who grew these students, Plus Seven did that all with students who worked very hard for her and did a lot of stuff, but really made growth in that proficiency area, and I think that's huge. As Mr. Clark said earlier, we don't have, I wish growth for biology would count, but it doesn't count for it. I think we had a little bit more there as well overall. ACT, okay, this is my big, it seems like I've been talking a lot already, but this is my big talking point. ACT has been trending down. We really have not done a whole lot with ACT over the past few years. We've had teachers working with the students in classroom, giving questions. We've done words of the day on the board and little things like that to keep them active, but we really have not taken a sustainable approach to how we're going to do this at Washington High School. As I talk to principals in the county, outside of the county, and ask them, what do you do for ACT? I never get, I get some good answers and I get pieces and parts, but what we're really looking to build is a sustainable, long-term program with ACT, something that not only is for just 11th graders right now, but is for ninth, 10th, moving up into 11th and pushing them forward. When you look at JROTC, I mean, you've got ROTC scholarships that are hinging on this, ASVAB correlation. You've got, you know, what does it take in an ACT score to get into ECU? Students don't know that kind of stuff. So if we start talking to them about this in ninth grade, then we're a whole lot better off with their mind frame when they take the test. So that's what we were looking for. So right now, we've got flex period, one day a week. We run them into homerooms. We work with them with, I brought this book, a free book from ACT, costs us nothing. We ordered 900 of them, and we're going to start using that in the classroom. Now, I don't foresee this year being huge changes with the ACT, but this is our building of the program in moving forward, so I hope in the next couple of years, we'll see some changes with this. Same with work keys. Grad rate. So like I said, we're working policy-wise at the school, making sure that we keep our kids in school, make sure that we're counseling, we're calling parents, letting them know about grades, working with Ms. Hamel. If we've got some kids who are working real hard and just not getting there, maybe Pathways is a good direction for them. Certainly not our goal, but sometimes that's the way it goes, so we're working with this with our graduation rate. And this is my favorite slide. I was very happy with what the teachers at Washington High School were able to do over this past year. We were a D school when I took over. We were a D school after my first year. We are now a C school. And our growth in achievement was plus 12 points, growth was plus 18, school performance plus 13. Again, I was very proud of the teachers with what they're doing in the classroom for these students. I think, and I've got it down at the bottom there, but I think that our teachers are doing a very good job teaching. A lot of the conversations that we have in school are, it's not that, you know, you can teach hard every day and still you get to the end of the year, and you're like, how did this student get a one on this test? But when you look back, how closely were you aligning what you were doing in the classroom to the actual curriculum that was being tested at the end of the year? So a lot of the conversations that we have are about curriculum, and how are you setting up your goals for each objective within the curriculum, and how do we do that pushing forward? When we do walk-through observations, another thing that we're looking for all the time is are you teaching bell-to-bell? Are you utilizing it time-wise? Are you engaging the students or using higher-order thinking questions throughout your day? If you're not, there's not a paper going in your file, we're going to have a conversation about it. You know, sometimes you walk in there and you take down questions, and you're like, boy, all they have is level-one questions. So you go back and talk with them, and you say, you had level-one knowledge questions all day today, but at what point in that unit are you going to get to the higher-order thinking questions? And that's the conversation you want to have with them. Maybe they haven't thought that far forward, maybe they have and they let you know, but that's what I want to do with them. That's the qualitative piece. That's the piece, kind of the fluffy piece, it's not the data, but I think is very important. And that's really, I have a fancy slide, but that's really the end of my spiel. So are there any questions?
I have a question that I struggle with. Can you take a minute and explain to us what's involved with the ACT work keys?
Sure. What we're doing each week, so we have a flex period in between first and second, they go to a homeroom period, so the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. Each grade level is working out of this book, doing a little bit with each section. So we're starting kind of late because we're still building this plane as it flies. But for instance, next week when we do our flex, they're going to do the English section. So the teachers are going to go over the English, how many questions there are, just a little bit of information on it, then they're going to give them a chance to work some of the problems for the remainder of that 25-minute period. And our goal is to get them to understand, I think some of the other high school principals talked about, is to understand the nature of the test, right? Don't spend five minutes reading the directions. You already know the directions. You've practiced this 100 times in our flex period. You know what, in the English section, what no change means. You don't have to sit there and analyze and think through it. You know what it means, and now you can really focus on the word instead of focusing on the format of the test. So that's the direction we're going in with this. And like I say, this year, we're not going to get through all the sections with it, but hopefully that we'll give them enough that it'll help them a little bit and get them over the edge. I talked about it a little bit in the slides, but I didn't really go over the data. But we have pre-ACT data, which you can break up into your bubble kids, your kids who already had a 17 or better, or your less than 14s. And we tried originally to kind of break those apart and work with them, but logistically it was a huge challenge, which is hence why we went back to the homerooms to work with them. So I hope that answers the question a little bit.
I appreciate all this data. It just overwhelms us a little bit because we don't look at it every day.
We need time to have it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, the good news is that now you get a break from the same kind of data because we're measured on a very different scale. The EdTech Center is measured under the North Carolina Alternative Schools Accountability Model. So as you can see in your presentation, we're under Option B. And Option B is what was called Option C for last year. They've just changed the way the model looks. So there are three major components, and the first one is student persistence. And that student persistence says, how many of your students are staying enrolled in any North Carolina school? So if they're leaving you, are they being enrolled somewhere else? It doesn't matter where in the state, as long as they're enrolled somewhere else. That's 20% of our score. The three major components that make up the second part of our score, which is also 20%, include all of the EOGs, EOCs, ACT, ACT work keys, math course rigor, the four-year cohort, and the five-year cohort graduation rate. You'll see here, we don't have a whole lot of scores here because if you have less than 10 students, you get an asterisk. If you have zero students, you have zero students. This year, we have 82 students today, and that is an all-time high for mid-year for EdTech. We started out with 60 pathway students at the beginning of the school year. We have at least a whole classroom full that came from Washington High School.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Spoiler alert. They came from Washington High School.
Swinson and I go way back. But with that said, those students are being successful, and you can see from our data that we're all a bunch of zeros there until 2017, 2018, and then you see some growth happening because the school's continually improving. Our ACT work keys and our ACT are really low because we often don't have anyone take it. They've taken it at another school before they got to us, or they're at a freshman or sophomore level and they're not taking it. So, you know, like I said, short presentation. This is where we're working on things. We're providing support and guidance to prepare them for college and careers. I have a lot of new people this year. I'm new, school counselors new. We had an EC teacher that was new, and she's leaving. We'll have someone new starting in January. Had a new math teacher who's certified and killing it. She's really working hard, doing a great job. I'm super impressed with her, and I'm expecting good things from her. We also will have a new data manager starting in January, and we'll have a new facilitator in our distance learning, online, and credit recovery lab. So with the personal changes that we're having, I think we're moving in a positive direction. We have that school counselor that is really doing a fabulous job. She is finding all kinds of resources within the community, and she's meeting with the students and talking to them about their future plans. I don't know if you saw in the paper recently that we had several that got scholarships from BCCC to do some continuing ed classes. Have one testing right now as we speak for the CRC so that he can continue in an apprenticeship program. So those things, she's done a really good job of working in conjunction with BCCC and putting some good things in place for them. Math course rigor basically says, are you offering rigorous math courses? We offer the same thing that is offered at any other school in the county, in the comprehensive high schools, even though we're different. We're offering the same thing. And the only teacher I have in the school that's not teaching multiple disciplines in one period is my math teacher. I made sure that she had Math One, Intro to Math, Math One, Math Two, and Math Three in separate periods so she doesn't have a Math Two and Math Three student in the same classroom. We saw the most need there. So you can see our math course rigor, those scores are good. And then our four-year graduation rate went down a little bit last year, but we had 53 out of 77. If you compare the numbers, you see 11 out of 15 was really good, 19 out of 27, not as good, 53 out of 77, still doing good. We're hoping to have even more. It looks like if we have them all complete as they should, we should have 23 mid-year graduates in January, if they do everything they need to do. We still have attendance issues, and that's something that we have to work on. That's one of our goals. Our five-year graduation rate actually went up because it's easier to get them to graduate in five years than four when they come to you and they're already a year behind. So that's our setting. We take the kids that haven't been successful anywhere else, and we try to do the best we can to make them successful, to help them become employable, to get them in the military, to get them in a continuing education situation so that they can be successful. We're developing lessons and units of instruction in a way that they haven't been done before. I just did a staff development yesterday and said, you know, I've been here first semester, and I kind of watched and saw what you were doing, and now I'm going to need to see you do a little bit more intensive planning. I'm going to need to see you using data to drive instruction. You can't be successful if you don't know where you're going. You have to measure what their current level is, decide where you need to take them and how you're going to do it, and then assess them again. And if they aren't meeting that goal, then we're going to have to remediate. So looking at pacing guides, curriculum guides, curriculum resources, and the North Carolina standards, and asking them to use data-driven instruction. It's not good enough to give them just whatever. You have to give them your best. So the third of the three major components, which makes up 60% of our score, is the school growth, and that's measured using EVOs. It measures the progress on the EOG and the EOC assessment data, and it also generates an index value, which is converted to a score on a 100-point scale for our school accountability. Our three-year calculation is the current year plus the two previous years. Schools using this model often have small numbers of students in a single year and may not have enough data to measure each indicator. So ours is based on three years versus just one year, so we have enough to make those 100 points available. Our total score for this year was maintaining, so we met growth, which is the good news, and we hope to continue doing that. Maintaining indicates a change between a negative 2.9 and a positive 2.9 compared to the previous year. So the 2014-15 year was the baseline year for us, and we're meeting, which is good. So our school improvement goal that supports this is that we'll develop and implement So our school improvement goal that supports this is that we'll develop and implement a consistent, intentional, and ongoing plan to support those student transitions from grade level to grade level, and that we will work with the BCCC for the Career and College Promise Courses, and also those apprenticeships and continuing education as the students are eligible. So we're giving them every opportunity that we can to work with industry partners and put them in apprenticeships when they're not college-bound. Any questions for me?
I know you addressed the attendance policy. I mean, where do you feel like you are in, not the attendance policy, but the attendance issue? Where do you think you are on an average day with your attendance?
I couldn't give you an offhand percentage on attendance.
You think you're getting maybe at least 50%?
Oh, yes. I think we're getting at least 50% because what we have is we have certain students that are only coming for first period, and we have some students that are only there for first and second because they only need one credit or they only need two credits. And then we have some that finish credit recovery in their credit recovery classes, and we give them an open block. "Okay, you're done with credit recovery. We're not going to keep you here all day long and just let you watch the paint dry on the walls." You know, we just can't do that. So we let them go so that they can go to that job, you know, the after-school, help their parents, you know, watch the children, see the little ones get off the bus, whatever's necessary. So it's hard to judge based on what you see in a classroom because our English classes, I think, are the best gauge for that, and they are packed full. So I think the kids are coming to school more now than they have been. And we're looking at incentives and rewards. We're doing PBIS. We're a green ribbon school from last year, and we're continuing with those PBIS rewards this year, and attendance is part of that. They have to find school fun, too. And one thing we're doing next week, if you want to see something really fun, stop by. We're doing a Christmas Spirit Week, and they get to dress up like a spirit week for next week. So that's an incentive also to come to school and have some fun. We're doing a decorate-your-door contest for the teachers, and the classroom that has the best one gets a pizza party. Where tomorrow, we go on a PBIS trip to the movies for any student that hasn't had out-of-school suspension. So we're trying to do everything we can to make it an enjoyable environment, even though it's an alternative school, and there are some kids that are alternatively placed because of their behaviors. When they exhibit good behaviors, we have to reward that. I mean, I made parent phone calls this afternoon to say, you know, "This student did a great job. She's been coming to school every day this week. She's worked really hard. She's gotten caught up." You know, "I call you when she acts up, and I just want to make sure that you know I'm going to call you when she does a good job, too." So I think that's making all the difference. Our morale, the teacher morale, the teacher encouragement piece is really big as well. And so we're moving in a positive direction. Any other questions?
You got a tough job. We know it.
Well, I mean, it's tough, but it's fun because you get to see progress, and that's what it's all about. Are we making a difference?
Hope so.
I hope so, too.
Thank you. Last but not least.
Yes, excuse me for being late. I didn't watch. Me watching. So I said I'd come in just in the nick of time, but I've enjoyed the presentation so far. Of course, I'll be speaking on the elementary level more than the, of course, we've heard a lot of high school, but of course, I'm from John Cotton-Taylor. We're a little bit different and unique in the sense that we are just a second and third-grade school. We serve about 525 students each day, about 265 in each grade level. So it's, we have about 13 teachers this year at each grade level, so have a lot of students and a lot of teachers, but a two-grade level makes it interesting, and so we're very fortunate in that sense. Another unique aspect of us, we get our data from just our third grade. Our second grade does the in-class assessment, but we get just our data just from our third grade. And we get our school proficiency data comes from our reading and our math EOGs, of course, combined and averaged out with just our third grade. And our school growth is unique in itself as well, again, just third grade, and we get it just from our reading data from a school growth perspective. So we go from a beginning-of-grade test, which is just a baseline that we give, a test that we give in the early September, we get a baseline for our third-grade students and their reading skills, and it compared to the end-of-grade test that we've all heard of, the EOG that we give out in June. And we just take a change in achievement levels, and that's taken into account for our school growth. This is, in third grade, of course, the first time that these students are ever taking standardized tests. That presents a challenge in itself, but we do a pretty good job getting prepared, or getting those students prepared for that. We do have seven subgroups at Taylor. We have black, Hispanic, white, two or more races, economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities. And last year, we were able to test every child, which puts us at 100% participation in our testing. When we talk about school growth, we were excited to be able to say this year that Taylor was one of the two schools in both the county to exceed growth this year, or, excuse me, last year for 2017 and 18. So we're excited about that, but we're really excited and proud of our next slide that shows that we've been able to exceed growth for the last three years at Taylor, being the 16th school year, 17th, and 18th school year. This is not an easy task to accomplish, so it just speaks highly to our teachers, of our teachers at Taylor each and every day. They work hard on a daily basis. So we're excited to share that news with you. To go a little more in-depth with the school growth, when we take our BOG, which is Beginning of Grade Test, and we look at our EOG, we had 18% of our students proficient in reading at the BOG at the beginning of grade in September, and we were able to move from that 18% to 50.4% proficient in reading for our school growth. So we're excited about that, and I'll be speaking a lot about that, of course, that. I want to dive a little bit deeper into those numbers for you. When we take our EOG, our BOG and our EOG, and we put some numbers with those, and we look at our score levels, of course, Level One and Two, the state recognizes Levels One and Two as being non-proficient, and Levels Three, Four, and Five as being proficient. Level Three being on-grade level, Four and Five being those students that are college and career-ready students. As you can tell, at our Level One at the BOG in September, we had 139 students that scored at a Level One. We had 60 at Level Two, and of course, we had our Level Threes, Fours, and Fives at 11, 27, and 4. I was excited to see after the EOG was completed that we were able to cut those Level Ones in more than in half and move those Level Ones into those Twos, Threes, Fours, and Fives spots. Of course, we always want to move them into our Level Threes, Fours, and Fives, and I honestly feel like when you take those numbers, we had 42 students at the BOG being shown proficient at Levels Three, Four, and Five. And at the end of the EOG, we had 122 students show proficiency. So that was a great leap for us. Really, really impressed with our teachers when we look at Level Four and Five, those students being our college and career-ready students. We had a big jump there at the EOG, so super proud of those teachers in that sense. They really worked hard, and that's reaching those higher-level students. And sometimes those higher-level students get pushed to the side a little bit just because we know, we think they've got it, so we won't really push them. But we were able to push them to the point of really getting them to the achievement level that we are really looking for. Also want to share this information with you. This year, as we look at our Beginning of Grade Test that we took in September, just wanted to compare those numbers for you. At Levels Two, Three, Four, and Five, we've stayed pretty comparable from this year to last year. We see a little more increase in our Level One students this year at the BOG. So we've got some work to do this year that we plan on getting done, but just to be, just want to take those, that's 30 more students at the Level One spot as compared to last year. But with the growth that we're making, I feel like we'll be able to push those students to the Threes, Fours, and Fives as well. To move away from school growth and look at teacher growth, we were really excited for our third-grade teachers. Of course, we had 14 teachers last year, and each teacher in the school was able to meet growth or exceed growth inside their classrooms. So we had 12 teachers that met growth, and we had two that exceeded growth inside the third-grade classrooms. So we're super excited for them. When we look at our second-grade teachers, we had 13 second-grade teachers, and they are not, of course, evaluated in EVOs from our BOG to our EOG. They are taken from the in-class assessment. We do, we do an EOI to a MOY, which would be a middle year, then to an EOI end-of-year. And that's how we get their EVOs data for our second grade. We had 13 teachers, like I said, and we had seven that met growth, and we had six that did not meet growth. But we have done some switching around in our second-grade staff to hopefully address those situations not meeting growth. As we move on to proficiency, I just put this chart together to show you a little bit of the four-year trend comparison. Like we said earlier, 2017, 18 school year, we were at 50.4% proficient in reading, and as you can tell from the trend, we are staying right around that 50% mark for our reading proficiency. As you look at our math proficiency, we were able to do 64.7% proficient in 17 and 18 last year. And as you can tell from the four-years trend, that we've been able, we have been able to increase our scores each year, noting that in 16 and 17, and 17, 18 last year, that we were able to retest our students in math. They were not successful on the first EOG math test. We did retest them. That did give us some help for proficiency. And unfortunately, this year, we're not able to retest those students due to the state changing the test up. So that'll be a little bit of a downfall for us, but we're going to work hard and see if we can go ahead and get that proficiency up before we have to retest. So if you look at the school proficiency as a whole with the math and reading combined, we finished the school year at 57.3% last year, being a C school. As we looked at our data, we looked at our subgroups, of course, and we found that one of our, the subgroup that did not perform as well as we would like would be our students with disabilities. And so we sat down and thought, "What do we need to do? Let's make sure we're doing the right things for those students." Of course, we're going to follow in the goals and service times of all those students with disabilities, their IEPs, which is their Individual Education Plans inside their EC classrooms. We do an AR, which is Accelerated Readers, a school-wide reading program that we do, and that helps the students with disabilities as well as our regular students or other students inside the classroom. And it's a school-wide, they may be reading on a first-grade level, or they may be reading on a fifth-grade level, but this gives them the chance to read at their level. They read books throughout the day, throughout the week, and take tests on the computer. And as they are successful in those tests, they're moving up each time in grade level. So it helps, or in ability level, so it helps them increase their reading as the year goes on. We also do guided reading in both our EC classrooms and our homerooms, regular ed classrooms. We do our web-based iReady, math and reading, and of course, they're on those for 45 minutes a week in both reading and math. We do connecting math concepts in our EC classrooms for those students with disabilities. And we just started this year doing NC check-ins, first time it's ever been offered for third grades. We're starting that this year. Very interested in that data we're seeing. What I like about it most is we can take those NC check-ins and we can go back and we can reteach from those. So we're able to put that test back in the students' hands and the teachers' hands, and they're able to work with those students on exactly what they're missing, what standards, what strategies they need to use, what steps they're missing. So I'm looking forward to big things from the check-ins. Another strategy that we're using that we put in to affect a couple, maybe three years ago, is what we call a power zone inside our master schedule. And what this does, it gives us an opportunity to take a 45-minute block each day, and we're able to take all the students who need to go out for specialized instruction and let them go out of the classroom for one time in the day. And what that, and the reason it came about, we had a lot of students missing class, going out to speech, going out to EC rooms, going out to TIP or enrichment programs, all at different times. So the teacher wasn't getting a chance to teach a core group of students all day. So we went, actually visited another school and saw this going on, so we incorporated it in ours. So what it does, it lets all our students go out to their specialized instruction, but in the same sense, it leaves about six or eight students inside the classroom. This all starts happening in the summer when I do class list because I have to make sure there's enough students in each classroom that I don't take, that the students that are going out are not too many in another classroom. So it's pretty strategic when we look at it that way, but it leaves about six or eight students, which usually are middle-of-the-road students, who are really our twos and threes that we want to push to those fours and fives, or those twos to those threes and fours. And it leaves them inside that classroom for 45 minutes as well, and it gives our regular ed teacher a chance to really focus on their needs as the other ones are out getting their needs as well. The other purpose it serves is, it kind of lets us double-dip our students because when they come back from that power zone, they're in that classroom the rest of the day. So they're getting a double-reading math lesson, a double-reading lesson, a double-math lesson, social studies, science. So it lets them see the grade level work as well as the specialized instruction they need. So that's been beneficial for us, and it's produced some pretty good results for us well. In that same time, our reading coaches take out our students as well, and they're taking out our bottom red students. When we talk about red students being our struggling students in reading, and we're doing what we call a reading horizons. And I'm excited about that program because now Eastern's doing reading horizons as well, K2. So we'll do it at K2, and it works on our phonics piece of reading. So we're excited to be able to have that incorporated and have a seamless transition of that coming in throughout the next few years. The next, I just wanted to share this information because sometimes at Taylor, we have in the last couple of years, have seen some challenging behaviors from our students with disabilities as well as our other students as well. And I wanted to share this because we've really seen an improvement through our PBIS program. We incorporated this a couple, three years ago, and we've, in the last two years, we've been able to be recognized as a green ribbon school from the state. And through this program, we've been able to do some different things, and we're really focusing on the Taylor rewarding positive behavior, not focusing on the negative behavior. And it's really put a different vibe to our students, a different vibe to our staff. We really celebrate positive behavior through different things, through the PBS Reward Days and all those kind of things. And I think the next slide here shows how that's working for us. As you can see, in August, which would be the beginning of the year, we're comparing last year's office referrals to this year's office referrals. In August, of course, we had one compared to four this year, but if you'll notice in September, October, and November, our office referrals have come down tremendously. And one of our big movements is I tell the teachers, you know, "These students cannot learn if they're not inside your classroom." And so we're doing a big, a big push to keep those students in the classrooms and not using out-of-school suspension as much. We'd rather see an in-school suspension where you have your work with you and you've got a teacher with you instructing. So we're excited about the PBIS program, what it's doing for us so far. So we're looking forward to that to the spring where office referrals decreasing as well. And that's all. I got any questions?
Nope. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn.
That's the last of the presentation.
My goodness.
Okay. All right. Is that, and we have three.
We have three more for next weekend, and we'll vote on school improvement plans at that time.
Which three? What three do we have? Now, Snow's already been.
We have Eastern, John Small, and Early College.
Yeah. All right. I would now thank you all very much, and thank you, high school principals that stayed to hear the elementary presentation. I'm sure Mr. Mitchell appreciates it. I now would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 15115C-321.
All is in favor?
Thanks a lot for all that data. I mean, that's some real work.
All right. We're back. Are we ready?
I'm ready.
Back in open session, and I need to entertain a vote that we approve our.
A motion to approve.
I didn't get that. Thank you, guys. Okay? All is in favor?
We're here to do that.
Motion carried. Now, if there's, are there any comments, Mr. Dunn, that we need to?
Yes, ma'am. Just three things I want to make the board aware of, four things, actually. Number one, we want to thank Lee Chevrolet. They donated a 2010 Chevy Aveo sedan to Northside High School Auto Mechanics Program for them to tear apart and put back together, and that was hauled up there this week. So we greatly appreciate Lee Chevrolet donating that. Want to make the board aware that one of our vendors that works with child nutrition, we're going to be starting in February, excuse me, late January, early February, offering pizza at Washington High School. And instead of just talking about a small piece of pizza, we're talking about personal pizza on the regular line every day that can be substituted for a regular meal. It is, will also be free to all of our students. If it works out well, we're going to expand it to more schools, but we're trying it at Washington. to whatever the lunch item of the day is. The, if you don't know, there have been some changes to our SRO assignments. Mr. Korea, Officer Korea, who was at PS Jones, who still remains at PS Jones but has been promoted within the department, he will actually be replaced by Officer Mesa, who was at Washington High School. And Officer Korea will be more of a floating officer, helping supervise all the SROs. Sergeant Zerniak will still be at Washington. So you have Zerniak at Washington, Mesa at PS Jones, Korea floating amongst all the schools. We still have two vacancies, and I met with the folks from the sheriff's office, and they talked about what they're doing in terms of finding those final two folks. And then lastly, just as a reminder, that Friday, December 21st, is a three-hour early release, not due to weather, but due to Christmas break.
And we will have another meeting on the 18th.
Yes, ma'am.
That's where we will start at 4:00.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any board member updates? All right. Can I have them?
We want to set dates for January. We at least need to do that.
Well, I would like to go ahead and set our first meeting for January, but since Mr. Cheeseman's going to be here on the 2nd, I feel like we need to consult him and make sure, I don't want to schedule a meeting without him, you know, being where.
Well, let me just throw this out here.
Did he give you some dates?
We will be out of school on the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, so if we were to meet on the 8th, I don't know that there would be much of an agenda on the 8th. So, because we just haven't, we'll be closed for 16 days, counting weekends. So my assumption is the, and I believe Mr. Cheeseman will also be out of town starting on the 9th, so I believe he's available on the 15th. If you wanted to set the 15th and then go figure out the second one from there.
Sure. If you want to set that as a tentative date, and I will make a point of talking to him before the 18th, so that we need to make a change, we'll know about it before we leave for break. And for now, we'll keep that time, but we'll entertain, you know, something different later. At 5:30?
Yes, ma'am.
The 15th at 5:30. Anybody have a problem with that?
I might not be here. I have a personal arrangement. I don't know how long it's going to take.
Okay. And I'll know more. He may entertain something different, too, but you can just let us know. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.